Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting in order. Lisa, roll call, please.
I'm Brayden.
Here.
I'm Shaffer.
Here.
I'm Andy Key.
Here.
Trey Robey.
Here.
I'm Gilbert.
Please, would you do the deification, please?
Certainly. Our heavenly Father, we come before thee and give thee thanks. We're grateful for this community of Rangel and for the people that reside here. We ask that thou will help us to heal some of the breaches that have occurred lately. We pray that thou will assist us as a council to make good decisions for the benefit of the whole. We're grateful for this country that we live in. We're grateful for our military and our law enforcement, for the work that they provide. We pray that we might show respect for that service. We say so through thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Thanks, Lisa.
Here with Lisa and Fred, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item of business is the approval of the minutes of the January 23, 2018 meeting. If anyone had a chance to look at those, and are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tyson, second by Andy Shaffer, to approve the minutes of January 23, 2018. Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain.
Lisa abstains. Okay, the next item is approval of the minutes of January 30, 2018, meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Well, that was unanimous. I'll put it down as Andy Key. Andy Shaffer, second by Andy Key, to approve the minutes of January 30, 2018. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is petitions and public input. Do we have any one in the audience which would like to address the council at this time?
May I say something before we open?
Go ahead, Lisa.
I wasn't able to attend the meeting on January 23.
Can you hear us with, we put our mics up to our face a little better? Does that work? Okay. I wasn't able to attend the meeting on January 23. I was on a vacation for our anniversary, and so I wanted to share some thoughts and my feelings today in an open meeting. I may stumble on this, and I may insert both feet. I don't know. I, um, this is really difficult for me. I felt like we really have betrayed our police department. I feel like we've made a huge mistake. I think there was probably some good intentions in what we did. I in no way underestimate the input of the public. I think we could have got that input a different way. I don't think we needed to have a one-sided piece of information sent out to the public where our policemen could not respond to that in a, in a public forum. I believe that we now have put our community and our policemen in, you know, having some safety concerns now, some huge safety concerns, and I don't like that. We can say we're heavy-handed, but if we're not, we're just saying hello drugs, hello criminals, come on in. That's my opinion. Now, they're so afraid to do anything, they're being a little too light-handed in a few situations. We don't want that either. If something's happening, dang it, we need to allow them to do their job. And if that means that we do stop them for traffic incidences, so be it, because we have a bigger drug problem than we do a police department problem. I want to stand here tonight and say I support our police department completely, as long as they're in the right. If they have done wrong, I will exploit them, and they know that. I've talked to them, we've visited a lot. I know that they're not the jolly, simple, easygoing people that you want them to be, because they are unique people. They are heroes. I know something about seeing things and doing things and having to put your life on the line every day, that you become a more serious person, and that's, that's part of the deal. It's not that they want to disrespect any people in the community. If there's been anybody in the community that's been disrespected or done wrong, then I will stand by those people, too. So I'm not going to pick community versus police officers, I'm picking right and wrong. And what occurred that other night, in my opinion, was wrong. Wrong place, wrong agenda. Did we need to hear from the public? You know? Yeah, possibly. But I also feel I've gotten many, many phone calls on the other side of the fence saying, hey, what happened? How could we do this to our police force? And I'm grateful for those phone calls. I am grateful for this team that sits here tonight that's trying to do what they feel is best. But I'm part of this town council, and I have to own up, the same as they did, as to what occurred and what's going to occur from this time forward, because I'm part of this group. And that frustrates me, that saddens me, it makes me very angry that we've done this not only to our police force, but to our town employees. We're going to throw employees under the bus. We better make sure we have both sides of the story first, and we did not do that. That is a problem, and the problem is here. So tonight, I just want to know, because I feel that this is being pushed by a personal agenda, that there is a hidden agenda. I don't like hidden agendas. I don't know why this is occurring, because we sure didn't do it right. Maybe it's just that we did it wrong, and maybe that's all it is. This is all my opinion, and I know there'll be a bunch of you that will disagree, and that's fine. I just needed to say that, I'm sorry. I apologize to our police department, I apologize to our town manager and our town employees that this occurred, and I hope that we've learned our lesson, that we never do that type of meeting ever again. We can have public input, and we can get it from a whole lot of different ways, but if we're going to have a public forum where there's a one-sided story, that's wrong. The police officers should have been able to stand and state their opinion also. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll go back, can you hear me now, Bud?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go back and say again, this is a time for petition and public input. If anyone in the audience would like to address the council at this time, that is your, that is your right, so, if anyone out there wants to. Jeannie, if you'd just come up and state your name at the podium and speak loudly for the group.
You may not be able to see me if I stand behind the podium.
Yeah, but I know where you are.
Okay, Jeannie Smith, and I've lived in Rangel for 39 years, and I haven't always agreed with some of the things that the police have done over 39 years, but I've always respected their job, because I have a nephew who's a police officer in Jefferson County, and I know that their life is on the line. They never know when they walk, approach somebody, whether it's going to be a death-defying circumstance or not, but I just wanted to say that I'm more proud of our police officers than I was of the council when I saw what went on on YouTube. And I, at this point, I'd rather get rid of the council than the police officers, because at least they've got my back, and I've never had a problem with them, and I think that our council should be behind them. If they're good officers, then you should be patting them on the back and telling them they were doing a good job, and not letting people stand up here who are, have complaints or rumors of complaints, that we need to just stick with the facts and not be going off wild and letting some of our citizens bash the police because they don't like what happened to them, but most of the time, they got stopped because there was something wrong. And it's, it's our job as citizens of this city and being a very, I think it was said that was the sixth safest city to live in in Colorado, and I appreciate that. And I think if we don't stand behind our police, then we're not going to be a very safe city, like Lisa said about, we're inviting people to come in, because you guys have hamstrung our police officers by not allowing them to do their job, according to our own Colorado revised statutes that tells them, you know, what's, what's legal, what's not legal. So I appreciate you hearing my viewpoint.
Thanks, Jeannie, we appreciate that. Anyone else which to speak to the council at this time? Bud? Again, please state your name at the podium, and we don't have to worry about your height.
I'm all what's his name. You know, I have, I have trouble with the law. I wonder, a month ago, that damn cop gave me a ticket for going 10 mile an hour over in the construction, construction zone. I didn't like that a bit. You know, we all pick the laws we like. If you run a stop sign, I guess you didn't like that one. If you didn't use your turn signal, so I guess you didn't like that one. Anyway, I think to do a good job, and I seem to remember reading something last year, something where there was one of the lowest crime rates in the whole darn state. Well, I think you have to work at something to do that, to get a rate like that. And, you know, if somebody's driving around at night or something, they ought to be stopped. If they look suspicious, I don't mean they've done anything, but they should be checked. I don't see how anybody can gripe with that. So I don't know, I just wanted to give my support to them. I don't see, you know, I used to get in trouble with the law a lot, but I quit doing stupid things, and I quit trying to catch them. I guess that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Bud. Anyone else? Okay? Again, please state your name and...
My name's Chase Kenny, and I wanted to say hey to everybody, because I'm happy to be here, happy to stand here and support the police officers. I think it's a logical fallacy to say because somebody messed up, everybody messes up. I think it's wrong to bash people who make mistakes, because we make mistakes. I also think it's incredibly ridiculous to say rumors, you know, not letting things come to fruition, you know, taking their facts and such. You know, I don't know everything that happened, I don't know all that went on, I only saw a little bit, and I've talked to some people who sat here and things that happened, but I just, as humans, you know, sometimes we think politically, sometimes we don't allow things to happen, and we use emotions to, to push forth our agenda, and I think it would have been smarter to at least talk to people before we did certain things, before we said certain things and everything, and, not because he's my uncle or anything, but I love Roy, I love the police department, and this is coming from a completely objective point of view, not something that I'm just trying to stick up for somebody or something like that, but I think it's incredibly, just, the word I think is ridiculous, and I just want you to all, I'm ashamed, frustrated, um, yeah, and I love everybody in here. I don't have anything against anybody, I don't, I don't harbor any poor feelings, I just, I'm ashamed, and I wish things were dealt differently, and I want every, everybody to at least come, come to this meeting with a sensible mind, not just writing down and jotting down notes of things that I could say that could, you know, stir up a problem or things that I could say that somebody told me without, you know, first checking with someone and this, and this, and this, and, and I'd rather just sit over there and listen to sound arguments than, than jargon, than, you know, just dumbfounded statements. But I think we should come to this, and if this comes up again, you know, we should come to it with a sound mind and, and lay out the arguments and allow people to, to speak their mind, but in a sensible, in a sensible way, and allow people to defend themselves. That's, that's what I think, and I appreciate all your time, I appreciate you guys allowing us to be here. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Chase. Anyone else? Please state your name and...
Shannon Kenny, I'm the wife of Lieutenant Kenny, I'm the EMS director for our community. And please bear with me, I've got a few things I want to say, and I'm going to try and do this and hold it together. I first want to say I'm very embarrassed, humiliated, and appalled at what happened here three weeks ago. It was the wrong place and wrong time to do this. If there's concerns and there's complaints, there is a proper procedure and a way to do it. Andy Key, Andy Shaffer, and Trey, would you like someone to come do this to you at your job? And would you like your bosses going after you guys without being able to defend yourself and give your side of the story and get the facts out, and then threatening your job or telling you you can't do this or can't do that? The other thing I want to point out to the three of you guys, because you three were the ones who really went after our officers, and it wasn't right. Andy Key, if your mom got hit by a drunk driver and got injured or killed, and these officers had a chance to stop that drunk driver from getting your mom, would you be angry at them? I guarantee you, you would. Andy Shaffer, same thing for your mom, or your wife, or your kids. Andy, or Trey, same thing for your family. All I'm asking and saying is get your facts and listen to both sides of the story. You guys talked about transparency, and you want a transparency, but yet, the following week, you guys took everyone into consecutive session and told them they can't discuss anything. My husband can't even talk to me about what took place in that meeting. How is that transparency? And were you guys willing, and did you guys open up and listen to their side of it? Did you look at the videos? Did you look at the reports? Did you guys get everything that needs to be looked at? If you haven't, you need to. Ride with him. Go spend several days with these officers when they're out there at night doing their job, protecting this community. These officers and our families have to worry now about the retaliation from people in this community, because these people that are not supposedly bad people, when they get under the influence of alcohol, and they get under the influence of drugs, they change. We just had two officers who went and did a VIN check in Ohio, a simple VIN check. You know what? They're dead. You tell that to their wives. These people weren't bad people, but yet their officers were attacked and executed. Is that what you guys want to cause by what you did? It's not fair, it's not right, and it was wrong. And you guys need to publicly apologize to our police department, our officers, and help your town employees relax, who are scared to death for their jobs now, about if we're going to throw our officers under the bus, is it going to throw them under the bus, too? This was not right. So I want you guys to think about those things. But no, I've had wives come to me who are scared to even see their, their husband go out on duty anymore, because they don't know if their husband's coming home to them because of what you guys did. Their kids are being attacked and being given a hard time and being totally called names and everything else because of who they are. This was wrong, and you guys need to really publicly apologize, and I'm sorry, I'm losing it, but I've had three weeks of stress and anger, and I've had a really hard week this last week, and I'm not happy with what you guys did. And if you guys can't correct this, the ones of you guys that went after them, you need to be, you need to step down, because you guys did not do what was right for this community. Your attorney did not control that meeting, he should be fired if he can't control the meeting, and you should have stepped up and said, whoa, stop, this is a general meeting, not an attack on individual officers. That turned in five minutes in this meeting. It turned to an attack, you guys, and you didn't control it. And I'm really, out of 35 years that I've been here, and I've been very proud of this town, I've given my heart and my soul to the ambulance, I'm proud of who my husband is, I'm proud of the job he does. I was so humiliated and embarrassed for this council that it's not funny, and Lisa, I want to commend you for stepping up to the plate and apologizing. But where are the people who were making those complaints that night? Do you see any of them here? Do you? I don't. They got their say, but they're not doing, they're not here to maybe hear what your guys' follow-up is going to be on this after two weeks. They're not here to listen to the other side of the story. They got their voice out, boy, and we put it on, on YouTube. Do you realize how bad that makes Rangel, Colorado, look to people? And Lisa, you're right, it just opened up the door for the druggies and the alkeys to come in and say, hey, this is great. They don't, they don't back our officers, they don't back anyone, we can go in there and just do whatever we want, because we're going to get away with it. So I'm really asking you guys tonight to think about what you did and find a way to fix this, because it needs fixed. But the damage you guys did to our officers was unacceptable, and it should have never happened. This was not the form to do this, ever, and I hope you guys never do this again. And that's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Shannon. Anyone else which to make a statement at this time? Okay, we're going to move on to changes to the agenda. Peter, any changes to the agenda? Okay, well, we're a little delayed, but we'll move on to our public hearing. We have a public hearing, first reading for the ordinance 688, 2018, an ordinance of the town of Rangel, Colorado, eliminating and reducing the liquor-related distance restrictions imposed by CRS 2012-47-313, relating to schools and campuses within the town. Peter, you want to make any comments on that?
This came up after we were, we were reviewing some of the Colorado revised statutes on the limitations, and this pretty much exempts Main Street for businesses that would want to open there and serve alcohol, so we have several businesses now that are within that 500-foot limit, and in speaking with our attorney, we just thought that we would clean that up and make us a little more user-friendly on Main Street, so that gives, gives an exemption to those businesses.
Okay. Community board meetings, do we have anything in there?
No, we are having a public safety committee meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock, though.
Okay. Supervised reports attached. Don, did you have, you and Jocelyn have something that you want to speak to the council about?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a handout for the council. I apologize that I didn't get it into the packets here, but I want you folks to, yeah, please. And you can pick one packet of six pages each.
So what you have before you, is it okay if I go down?
Please.
Okay. So what you have before you is sort of a timeline on what's going on with the Phase 3 sedimentation basin work at the water treatment plant. And I believe you're aware that we've had some issues regarding the work that's being done there, and I just wanted to brief you on what has transpired and where we are with that right now. Yeah, so I'm just going to go through the timeline real briefly, I'm not going to cover everything, but in, in February of 17, we signed a contract with Restrauction Corporation to do the Phase 3 concrete repair work in the basin. In March, we discovered through the inspection process that they weren't following the specifications for that project, and we remonstrated with them and basically told them that they would be responsible for the outcome, because they hadn't followed the specifications, and we had pointed it out to them ahead of time, and they chose to ignore them and go forward with their work anyway. They finished the project and left the site at the end of March, and this was after testing to determine that it met the strength requirements to finish the project. We filled the basin in May after other work was done in the basin, new equipment was installed, so the coatings basically had two months, 60 days, to cure before any water was ever introduced to the basin. During a normal draining and inspection in August, Don discovered that the coatings were failing. They were bubbled, and a good 30% of the coatings on the walls were bubbling and failing. At that point, we called in the inspectors, the coatings manufacturer, and the contractor to return to the site to troubleshoot, this is on the second page, in September, and Sika Corporation, the manufacturer of the coatings, prepared a protocol on how to repair the work. The crew came back in mid-November, mid-September under warranty, that was guaranteed through the contract for this work, and began to remove the coatings. About a week later, they left, and the company told us that we could go ahead and put that basin back into service, we needed to do so to keep the water plant functioning and be able to do maintenance on the other side. They then gave us a schedule of how they were going to do the remainder of the warranty work, and we emptied that basin on November 6 to begin that warranty work. Then on the last page, sort of the most recent occurrences, between early November and right before Christmas, Restrauction removed the remainder of the coatings and prepped the walls for re-coating, all under warranty, so they were not being paid for any of this work. They recoded the basin between the day after Christmas and January 26, so taking about a month to do all this work, and we discovered problems with it. We were still having bug holes, microscopic little openings, and bubbles and pinholes in the coating. So we brought everyone back on-site on January 9 of this year, and Sika prepared a new protocol on how the contractors should deal with that. They were implementing that protocol at the end of January, when we again found bubbles in the coating, and work was stopped. So right now, we are basically waiting for our inspection company to come back in a day or so and do a final test for moisture content and relative humidity in the basin, to find out if we have problems that we weren't aware of, and whether the right coatings were specified for the work. We plan on bringing the contractor, the engineer, the coatings manufacturer, all together again to come up with what we hope is a final protocol for finishing this work and getting us a coated basin that we can use again for water treatment. But I just wanted you folks to know that, you know, we have incurred about $29,000 in inspection fees that were unanticipated. If this work had been completed at the end of March of 2017, when it was supposed to be, we would not have had to bring the inspectors back, and we've done so, because we believe that their knowledge and perspective is invaluable to help protect us in this work. We plan on billing Restrauction Corporation for those inspection fees, because we would not have incurred these costs if they had done the job properly. And we're also looking at the potential for legal acts. job properly. And we're also looking at the potential for legal action if we can't get resolution and the final product that we paid for. You know, I have to say, the original contract was in the $65,000 range to do the work on this basin, and I believe that they have spent well over that in labor on the warranty work. They, they've been there for months. They've created some of their own problems, but they have at least shown up and tried to make it right. We're just kind of in this do-loop right now of figuring out what the best way to proceed is and making sure the town gets the product that we paid for while still being empathetic to this company that they've given us probably two months of free labor of anywhere between three and seven people to try to make this project resolve in a satisfactory manner. So we've got ongoing discussions and testing. Hopefully, I'll be able to come back in a week or so and tell you that this problem and process has been resolved to our satisfaction. But I just wanted you folks to know where we were with this. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Jocelyn?
Yeah, I have one. So the coating that was used, was it something that we suggested or the project managers and engineers from this company suggested?
No. So it was the town's consulting engineer, SGM, who specified these coatings, and they did so by working with the coatings manufacturer, by describing the problems and the issues in the basin. And the coatings manufacturer's rep said, oh, you need this coating to do this, and you need these coatings to do that, and you need those coatings to do the other thing. So it was a combination of the coatings manufacturer and the consulting engineer who did this. So we believe we do have recourse through that relationship and that process. It's just taking more time than we ever anticipated.
Any other questions? Don, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, it's just a nightmare. I'm afraid that we're not going to wind up with what we were hoping to get. I can't guarantee longevity. Nobody else is going to be able to do that, too. So down the road, and if I have to come back and explain to you that we're going to probably have to take all the coatings off the wall, you don't want.
So I'm hoping Don is being pessimistic, but I can't say for sure. But we are seeking to resolve this in a way that protects the town. We are looking for an extended warranty from the companies to cover this additional work that they had to do. We are looking at every option that we have available to us contractually and legally to protect ourselves.
Okay.
Is there other coating that might work better? I mean, I know you guys have worked, worked on this for many hours, but is there something else out there that?
Originally, they could have, if they would regroup probably at the beginning, there was recommended there's a secret 75 coating that they could have used on the wall, which would have fit the conditions a little bit better.
Well, and our inspectors, who are former coatings applicators and are now inspectors, have told us that they would not have speced Sika for this application. They would have used a Tenemic product, but hindsight's 20/20. And we relied on a consulting engineer to tell us what the best way to proceed was, and they speced the Sika product.
The Sika products were also used on the filter basins.
Yes, the Sika products.
Which has held up pretty reasonable for the timeline and what's going on with them.
Right. They were used in our Phase I recovery work when the contractor left the job unfinished, and that's why we had confidence in them because we used them in Phase I on filters three and four and have had good experience with them. And so we, nobody can explain why our experience on the West Basin is so different than our experience on the East filter basins.
So I have a question. So at this point, can we not just direct them to use the other product?
Um...
Not without stripping all the other product off the wall, which would be costly.
It would be costly, and it would take a lot of time. And right now, our basin has been out of commission since November 6, and it's putting a big burden on the...
But if we keep going in this cycle, aren't we going to get there anyway?
Probably.
Then I'm just saying, when do we stop? And when do we say, uh?
We have a timeline, too.
Do we have a timeline when we drop dead and say, okay, we've got to go the other way?
We've got to approach this timeline very shortly.
Yeah, I mean, we have to have the basin back in service for the spring and summer peak demand period. And the question is whether the coatings will serve the purpose to get us through peak demand to the fall when demand lowers again, and we can look at...
Guess we pray for that and...
Other ways to resolve it.
Yeah, basically, what we could do is we could cut it off at a point to where we can use the basin, get through the peak demand period, and then look at this situation and follow that.
I'm just saying, we may have to look at that as possible.
We are, we are considering.
Do you see any interruption in, in water service for the community?
I would not, I'd cry.
No, I don't believe so.
No.
We're doing everything we can to avoid that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if we, if we have to go back on the manufacture of this other stuff, we're keeping everything in line in case we have to, right?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Documenting the absolute, you know what out of it.
Good, thank you.
I have a little bit of experience with that.
You go.
She's a now-professional applicator.
Anything else?
So just, I'm trying to understand this. So the filter has the same coating, the filter tank has the same coating, but yet, is it different phases of the water cycle then? Is that something like that maybe?
I would say it was a different application. They followed, they didn't miss their window times on recoach and stuff, and they did it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's much more complicated than the summary I've given you.
Okay.
And if anyone wants to know more, we can bore you to tears with it. Please feel free to contact me or come see me, and I'd be happy to tell you more. But we try to see things inside.
Thanks, Jocelyn. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vince?
I'd like to add one more thing real quick. I'm really proud of Michael Dillon. He did pass his A-Water test. This is a huge, huge addendum for us, and I think that secures our future in, in the water industry.
That's great. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
I guess since we last met, you guys wanted an update. I've met with Councilman Bill Green, and we discussed performance evaluations, goals, and objectives for the police department. He's come up with some good ideas from Chevron in the evaluation process we're looking at implementing and changing. Currently working on the police, Citizen Academy, we've outlined completed, application and waiver is completed and printed, and we're just going to be getting that on with the town website and so forth, Facebook page, if we continue to do that with the police department. That's still debatable at this point in time. And anyway, the direction for that, the waivers completed and will be accepting applications. Had the few turnout for the luncheon with the town, Leona with the, over in dinosaur, she said, can I do it? And I said, I, yeah, you can. So we got one person interested in it anyway. But the biggest claim is, from what I gather, the communication and so forth, is that we're working on the process for claims and the direction we're headed. We're looking at actually two categories, category one, planer level one. Level one, a credible allegation of criminal conduct, on and off duty, employee allegations or erroneous, policy violations such as excessive force, sexual harassment, or abuse of official position. Internal, this is what we call an internal affairs investigation. We do very few of these. In my time, I think I have probably done three internal affairs investigations, one being on domestic violence. And those two are, these are handled by an outside agency, usually like Carl Bureau Investigations. Level two complaint, it's a credible allegation, actual missions, of course, it's less than the category one. It's not an internal affairs investigation, and this will be the class two complaint that we're looking at going to. And we have the advising forms, credible allegations, refer to sobriety, truthfulness, documented history of the complainant. All complaints shall be welcomed on face value except with intoxication or drug abuse altered states. Truthfulness from the person who's given that, if they've known to be untruthful and chronic unfounded complaints, which we don't have during many of them. These will all be given to the lieutenant. Lieutenant has been out, if some of you may or may not be aware of that. Roy has hopefully come back on Thursday, but that is up in the air at this point in time, after I spoke with him today, that he's still needing some testing done. And all the merits of stress of this job has taken a toll on everybody. And so he is taking his time on that, and if he needs more time, so be it. We'll run with what we have and maintain that. Everybody will still do their job to the greatest of their ability like we always have. And third is inquiries. A question about employees' performance tactics, actions, or other activities, that's the majority of where this falls into. Most all these complaints that we deal with, I've had three complaints in the last week. All complaints is a minimum of 10 to 14 hours to investigate. They all fall under, they all fall underneath the inquiry on what we do, why we do it, or how we do our job. If most of these all can be handled by a set down conversation with an individual, doesn't have to go through the town manager, the process, and on a form, into me, into lieutenant, so on and so forth. This can be usually done by the end of the shift, and most of these can be. If they can't, and then we will do that, and in the course of some of them, there may be basically where a complaint could be that we find something out through the investigation process, and we do have an internal affairs, but that's highly unlikely. But that can happen at times. We'll be looking at third-party complaints should be validated prior to launching a formal investigation by attempting to identify and locate the actual persons who was subject to the alleged misconduct, supervisor discretion. That'll be the lieutenant should be using, third-party complaints. And so it goes on to there. Then we have the dispositions, the unfounded sustained, sustained, unsustained, exonerated, and misconduct not based on complaint. It was, that one's if substantiates employees in misconduct, not alleged initially, but discovered during an investigation. We'll be notifying employees of all these. We have not on one of them. And so anyway, so we go into the informal, informing employees, no action-taking, coaching employees, remedial training, written letters of reprimand. So that is the process of where we're looking at going to. I think this will be more than adequate to update the questions, concerns, issues that the public had or the lack thereof with us previously. And so anyway, I just wanted to bring up also at the crab shack, there was an individual there who was drinking from a flask, I called, I'm assuming? I don't know. I didn't ask. I wasn't going to go ask. I'm not going to be there to judge or anything. I saw an individual there with a flask drinking from it. So I'm just bringing to your attention, you guys, the local liquor enforcement, and that's why I'm just bringing it to you at this time. So any questions, concerns at this point? Sorry if I spoke too fast. I was just trying to...
You're going to like write this up, and we'll get to review it later, I'm sure.
Pardon me?
You're going to have that, all that written up, the whole policy of what you're going and what you're doing.
Yes, that will be all written up for you guys. It'll be gone before the public safety committee, and then they can review that to the council. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Any other questions for Vince?
Yeah, I had a question. So the, on the actual complaint form, this is the, the header's Rangeley Police Department, complaint concern against police department personnel. There's a sentence in there that says, although if a complaint is taken and it is found to be grossly false or deliberately misleading about an officer incident, is that language removed, or is that going to be in?
No, that will be, that will still be there because somebody does lie or is erroneous and false, that we will start charging them with false reporting also.
Okay, can we, let's just make sure we make that to where it isn't a...
It's not determined, not to make this complaint in most United States in cases. I looked at Grand Junction's policy. Our policy is staken from Grand Junction's policy. It's the exact same word as what Grand Junction Police Department has. This is in Arizona, so.
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thanks, Vince.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Our next item is town manager update. Peter?
Yes. Okay, a few things. Thursday morning, 7:30, RDA, RDC meeting. We plan to review information related to one new startup business, potential new startup business. We want to also talk about pursuing a grant for the cowork space. A grant opportunity has come our way. Connie and I have been visiting about that today, and we'll look a little deeper into pursuing a ready grant for that, for that purpose. We're also looking at Better Cities progress on the call center recruitment process. That'll happen on Thursday morning. And the steps, they'll be on a conference call with us, and they'll be relaying information as to the progress and what their next steps are for recruiting a call center. In the RDC, we're going to have an update from Dan Fiskus with the museum related to the Dominguez Archaeological Research Group. So he'll give us the progress on the payments and what they've done with the money to date. Last week, I spent a good deal of time working citizen complaints related to the police department, and want to ensure that those are adequately investigated and come to a conclusive endpoint on each of those, which we did so far on the progress. And we'll be covering some of those in the public safety committee meeting tomorrow. Tomorrow, we'll also talk about Citizen Academy. You have some of that information in your packets. That seems to be working well for other agencies. And also tomorrow's meeting, the district attorney, Jeff Chaney, will be at that meeting at 3 o'clock to talk about the Citizens Academy and his, his role that he's going to play in that whole six-week program. So we're looking forward to that. We have a short timeline. We're looking at trying to launch that on 3/1, so we'll have to discuss that tomorrow, too, to see if that's possible, to pick up the waivers. If we, well, once we start promoting, I think we'll get some interest. We introduced that at a Business for Breakfast meeting. I think we had two, two that nominated themselves to participate in the meeting. But we're looking for a class size of 15 to 20 to participate in the academy, which has kind of a dual purpose of allowing the citizens and the police officers to work together to kind of understand each other's role and, and to see what some of the obstacles are and understand some of the laws related to their constitutional rights and the, and the officers' rights. But also to look at some of the procedures they're using, K-9 and that sort of thing, interdiction, why they do the things they Oh, I was, are you prepared to do an election update?
We'll mail out the UCABIA ballots by Friday, and then about a month from now, we'll mail out all of the rest in between that time.
Make sure the audience is here.
UCABIA, military voters, ballots will go out by Friday, and the rest of the ballots will go out by March. All we have on our ballot are the mayor and three trustee seats for voting this year. There will be no ballot questions.
Any questions for Lisa on that? Fair district, or fair districts in front of you, that's AGNC topic for the next meeting. If you're familiar with some of the issues that have happened related to fair districts, gerrymandering and that kind of thing that's over the course of the last 20 years in the state of Colorado, hoping to correct some of that. And so Bruce McLeod with EIS Solutions will be presenting it for next AGNC meeting. Wanted to introduce the topic tonight. I know a lot of you won't be attending that meeting. There's also a form on the back if you investigate this and choose to support the fair districts initiative. You have the opportunity to do that. That meeting is February 21, AGNC in Rifle, at the Grand River Health, at the hospital there. Another area that we're looking at is the erosion that's happened to Shale Mountain over here beside, you know, where we have the shale rock just below the path, bike, pedestrian path right, right there, Kennedy on the, on the south side, just west of Kennedy Drive. Last year, we had some, well, it actually would have been in '16, we had some pretty heavy rains that caused some significant erosion, and that's gotten worse over the past year. So we're going to be looking at how we correct that problem. So we're going to be looking at how we correct that problem, using more of a permanent solution, maybe a geocell or a geo grid kind of technology, rather than shale, maybe plants, so Janet, Janet Miller, our building ground supervisors, taking that on as a project, looking at some of the technologies that might be employed there. We thought about that as part of a grant process with AGNC, the Technical Assistance Grant, but that grant's not going to have enough funding for that kind of a project. So we're looking at targeting the Technical Assistance Grant to the corner of North Stanland and Main Street, right there, and finish that pool memorial that was started there in cooperation with the school district and the Elks Club, and I think we, I think we would have sufficient funding to complete that project this year. And that would add to the aesthetics of that end of town, and I think we're pretty much done on that end and we need to start on the, on the east end of town. Any questions about what's going on around town?
Any questions for Peter?
Connie, can you talk about the race cars that are coming in the second week? It's kind of getting into maybe some old business, would you, would you mind updating the council on that, please?
Okay, so we have the real, hilltop racer, hill climb racers coming in out of Colorado Springs, and they're wanting to come and race the weekend after Labor Day. So, what'd they say, about 50 cars, Andy?
Yes.
And it's, they're kind of like Rally Colorado, so they'll come in with a group. A lot of them will stay in hotels, some of them will stay out at the campgrounds, but we're excited, they got the GPS mapping today, the county did that, and I think they found their roads. So it looks like, well, it is going to happen, so, yeah, they're coming, we'll need volunteers as well. And we'll start getting into talks probably within the next couple of weeks, but we'll start having scheduled conference calls like we do with Rally.
What kind of hill climb cars, what kind of are they?
They're just different types of cars, they have different classifications.
They're trucks or-
They're not street legal.
Oh.
Yeah, they're actual race cars.
Oh.
Yeah. And a lot of the drivers that drove in Rally will be driving in this one as well, so.
And instead of taking a big track like the Rally Colorado did, they, they focus on just one little section of a county road that they're trying to get approved, but, but it should be, it should be a little higher RPM going on with those vehicles for sure. Should be a neat deal.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thanks Connie.
You're welcome.
Peter, anything else?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business. Discussion and action to approve the quote of $12,200 to complete the 2017 financial audit by Cal CPA Services PC. Anything you, you or Peter want to add to that? Hey Marla, please introduce yourself.
I'm Marla Coats and I'm the owner of Cal CPA Services, just our normal audit that we do for you guys for the last couple of years, and I'm just here to answer any questions for any of you guys, if you have any on them.
Any questions for Marla? Peter, anything you want to add?
No, we-
Marla, please.
Okay, that's positive, thanks Marla.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote for $12,200 to complete the 2017 financial audit by Colorado CPA Services.
You have a second? I'll second. Motion by Andy Key, second by Lisa Hatch, to approve the audit in the amount of $12,200 for 2017. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thanks, Marla.
Alright, thank you.
Our next item is discussion and action to authorize the mayor to participate as a signatory to the programmatic agreement between the Bureau of Land Management, the White River Field Office, and the Colorado State Historic Preservation Officer regarding the Wagon Wheel West Trail System in Rio Blanco and Moffett Counties, Colorado, and whereas the BLM WRFO has invited the following local governments to participate in the development of this agreement and to be concurring parties, Rio Blanco County, Moffett County, Garfield County, Town of Rangeli, Town of Meker, Town of Dinosaur, White River, and Douglas Creek Conservation Districts.
Okay, so the programmatic agreement, basically allowing us to be a signatory, doesn't provide a lot of stroke other than to say that we support the initiative that the BLM is going through, in allowing us to sign and promote the trail system prior to any surveys that they would have to complete as part of their, as part of their agenda or process in approving a trail system, so that, to approve the existing proposed trail system for Wagon Wheel West, which is over 300 miles, it would take them another five years to complete the surveys. So they are doing a workaround here by initiating the programmatic agreement in advance of that, and the county has some clout in terms of their invited signatory status, we are more of a support mechanism, we support the, support the process is what we're saying, and so that we can promote these trails in advance of this. There's a lot of other parties that are involved here, including the tribal parties, and they have significant say, should they have any objection to certain sites or locations of the trails, and of course they're consulting through this whole process. This programmatic agreement's going to change before the five-year survey is completed, they'll come back to us and ask for another signature on that, on that next document.
So, didn't, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we just, didn't the federal government change their NEPA process for like 18 months or something?
I'm sure they did, I don't, I can't tell you.
So, I just, I'm sitting here going, a five-year program that should be done in 18 months, why?
Actually, their, the White River Field Office has estimated it'll take them 10 years to do the surveys for all of the roads that they have in their system. They think just the trail system, as proposed right now, with a 300-foot buffer on each side of the trail, would take them five years to complete the survey here, so we don't want to wait five years. We're looking to support this PA before that.
I also think after they do it, we would then have a seat at the table too on any discussions over the environmental assessment, stuff like that, right?
That's right, that gives us that authority as well, yeah.
Andy, you have comments? Good, any other questions?
No, I think that's a good medium step, I wish it wouldn't take so long that we have to do something to move forward, so with that, you know, I'll make the motion to approve as it was written.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Lisa, second by Tyson. Further, the action as read, for the discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Our next item is discussion and action to award the bid for the White River Village Laundry Capital Improvement Project to Mueller Building Services. You have the bid information in your packets. Pete, do you want to kind of highlight that?
I'm going to let Janet address that, she's been pulling this together.
So we received two bids on the project, both from local contractors, and we've worked with Mark Mueller, he's done some of the work here on this remodel here. Both of the contractors have good reputations, so just boiled down to lowest, lowest bid, which was Mark Mueller, and that's our recommendation.
Thank you. Janet, what was that bid amount?
Uh, $17,379.
Okay, thanks, just needed that for the motion.
I assume the Fresh Express is just in there as an alternate, like an alternate solution?
Well, so, because during the construction, the residents there will be without laundry, so we've, we're going to contract with Fresh Express to come in and pick up their laundry once a week, and do it and then deliver it back for them.
Okay, thank you.
How long do you anticipate it?
30 days.
30, it was 30 days, right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the White River Laundry Capital Improvement Project with a amount of $17,379?
I would say we ought to add this, the total in here, you got the 20% contingency with the, with the laundry and the bid price, so total of the, total costs, add that into the motion.
$23,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Does she motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $23,000, $23,623 to complete the capital laundry improvement at White River Village.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Andy Schaefer, second by Matt Vilgren, for the discussion. Not those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thanks, Mark.
Our next item is discussion and action to approve the preliminary December 2017 financial summary. Any questions or comments?
A motion to approve the preliminary December 2017 financial summary.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Lisa Hatch, second by Andy Schaefer, approve the December 2017 financial summary as presented, further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next item is discussion and action to approve the January 2018 check register, which is in your packets. Any questions? If not, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Andy Schaefer, second by Tyson Hacking, to approve the January 2018 check register, for the discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next item is discussion and action to approve the special events permit for the CNCC Foundation Dinner, which is scheduled for March 31st. Need discussion? If not, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Trey, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Andy Key, further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Abstain.
Was one abstention for Lisa. Okay, next one is discussion and action to approve the renewal of the liquor license for Come and Go. Any comments? If not, motion to approve?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Sorry. Second.
Motion by Andy Schaefer, second by Andy Key, to approve the renewal of the liquor license for Come and Go, further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstention by Lisa. Discussion and action to approve the renewal of the liquor license for the Range and Liquor Store. Need discussion? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Andy Key, second by Matt Vilgren, to approve the liquor license for the renewal for Range and Liquor Store. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstention by Lisa. Next item is discussion and action to approve the renewal of the liquor license for Loafen Jug. Discussion? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Trey, Trey?
Yes. Second.
Motion by Trey Roby, second by Andy Schaefer, to approve the renewal of the liquor license for Loafen Jug, further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Lisa abstains. Do we have any other business to bring before the council at this time?
No.
If not, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Lisa.